... being an executive session where we discuss the personnel issue and the collective bargaining agreement with the Court Appointed Professional Employees Association.
Thank you. Our recognition is a ceremony of proclamations. We have one proclamation this evening, recognizing Mr. Ed Bromensky for his service. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas Luzerne County Council, the citizens of Luzerne County believe that the greatest gift an individual can bestow on his or her community is a willingness to serve and place one's own needs second to the needs of others. Whereas Mr. Ed Bromensky has been an individual who has provided over three decades of service as a public official. He has used his knowledge, leadership, and experience in all the positions to seek progress for the county and its citizens. Whereas Mr. Bromensky has served in the public positions of Luzerne County Commissioner, Swearholder of Borough, excuse me, Mayor, Luzerne County Council Member, Public Education Teacher, and the Director of Luzerne County Assessor's Office. And whereas Mr. Bromensky has provided valuable service in each of the public official positions. Now therefore, we, Luzerne County Council, in recognition for all of his years of service, do hereby honor, applaud, and thank Mr. Ed Bromensky and wish him the best of health and many years of happy retirement from public service. And Mr. Bromensky will receive this in the mail later this week. And we also have two retirements. Mr. Majikis, who was a probation officer, retired from probation services this month, and Ms. Veat, who is a physical technician for the probation services, also retired this month, and they will receive a letter and thank you for the years of service in Luzerne County. And the additions or delictions from the voting session agenda. Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move.
Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wakis. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Getting down to public comment on the voting session agenda items. Mr. Griffith?
I have a couple of items on the agenda that I need to discuss with the council. Most importantly, as you all know, I come here complaining about charter violations. Agenda items one, two, three, five, right on through. If you look at the resolutions at the end, some of the resolutions are worded differently as when they become effective. The charter is very clear on when resolutions become effective. I don't understand how we can change that. Of course, the Office of Law can change anything because that becomes the office of God around here to do whatever you want. But clearly, the charter says that resolutions become effective five days after the manager gets his chance to reconsider an ordinance. What's real striking is the ordinance for the county tax collector for Courteille, where it says, "The effective date of the resolution shall be six days after adoption or when signed by the county manager." I didn't know he was a member of council, but I guess he is. I think you need to look at these things when you look at resolutions and when they become effective. Some become immediate, some become six days later, some become when the manager decides to sign. That's not what the charter says. So we need to follow what the charter says and do what the charter says. That's why we adopted a charter, not so the Office of Law can put in anything they want. Item number four, or items one, two, and three also, is I find it interesting that we don't see anything about the Borough Council voting on this whole issue with the fields. I did speak to the manager, the mayor, and I did speak to County Council Chair. I find it interesting the council doesn't have any of that information.
Excuse me, Mr. Griffith, you didn't speak to me. You may have spoken to the chair.
The Borough Mayor and Council Chair of the Borough.
Yeah, the Borough.
Right. So they, I think that information should be real important for this council before you adopt these resolutions, to find out if the Borough Council agrees with it. You don't have anything in your packet that says that, so I think that's something that you should look at or table this until you get that information. Item number four is collective bargaining agreement. Once again, we don't get that agreement, so the public can comment on it, and the office of God says, "We don't get that information." However, when the Dallas School District was on strike, we got that information. When Valley West negotiates a contract, we get that information. But when the county negotiates a contract, we don't get that information. Very, very interesting how the office of God can do that. Agenda number five, the LERTA. I don't think we should allow a public meeting on this LERTA. The people of this county are tired of giveaways. We got hit with a stormwater fee, $5 registration fee. You took our homestead away. You took the homestead fee away, promised to give it back, and now we're going to give a LERTA to some corporation for corporate welfare so we can interfere with the private sector, giving somebody a chance to not pay their taxes. Let's do a reverse LERTA. Every dime they pay in taxes, give it back to the taxpayers as a homestead. How about that? So if they're going to pay $200,000 in taxes, give it back to the taxpayers if you don't want it. This county's $300 million in debt. I don't understand how you could even consider a LERTA. And I'll wrap up on item number nine. No, I already addressed that. So I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Troy?
First, just a general comment. I just wondered, three minutes to me seems to be very constricting, and I was wondering if at some point, I'm sure it won't be tonight, if council could take up the motion or the idea of extending the time. And for instance, Mr. Griffith had a lot of comments about various items. There's so many items here, it's, if a person is concerned and committed to these, to commenting on these items and to trying to make people aware of certain perspectives of them, it's impossible to contain that in three minutes. So I think some extension should be allowed for an individual if he or she requests it, or in general, it should be extended to four or five minutes. I don't think that's asking a lot. But I would just like to comment very, to follow up a little bit on what was just previously said, and that the collective bargaining agreement that was reached, item number four, I am sort of disappointed there that the specifics of this, I guess, I assume, I'm not too familiar with the way the county goes about this, but the, I assume that the specifics of this agreement will not be released for a while yet. Is that correct, Ms. McGinley? Which I, I-
Well, go ahead with your comments, and then we'll try to answer what your questions-
Okay.
Otherwise, you might run out of time, and we don't want this franchise from them.
In general, the crux of my comments are pointed towards number five. Again, to follow up on what Walter just said, I see it as a case of public, of corporate welfare. I think that the term accountability has a lot of application here. The, and I'm not specifically talking, I know, I was very gratified by the comments of, I know at least two people here are opposed to this concept, to this giveaway, to these, to this company, with the developers, who I think there must be, they have a certain amount of presumptuous to think that they're, they're on a higher plane than everybody else who goes about making the, who are entrepreneurial enough to go ahead with projects without tax rebates, tax allotments. And I think that the line should be drawn in the sand already to stop this sort of thing. As he said, the county is in excessive amount of debt, the tax money could be used to pay off that debt, or perhaps to prevent any future tax increases to, and, you know, other increases perhaps in vehicle registration fee and so forth. The term accountability applies. I think that you people who probably are going to vote for this tonight to allow this hearing to take place should realize that you are accountable to the people who elected you, not to the, to the special interests who want a, who want a tax break here, who want a tax giveaway. And accountable means that you, you are responsible towards them if they have indicated that they're opposed to it, if there's some question on it. And more comment, if you're not sure about where people stand on it, then let's, let's have a special hearing about it, on a hearing on whether there's going to be a hearing. Because I think one step, one step leads to another here. If there's a hearing that's going to be held on this thing, then pretty soon, there's going to be, you know, this guy's going to prevent his case, and you're going to have another North Point deal here, which, as I see, gave away the store. You don't even have any jobs being created, or very few, I guess, if it's a retail, upscale retail complex, as I read in the paper.
Mr. Troy, would you complete your comments, please?
All right. I, I think that's about it.
Okay. And in regards to the collective bargain agreement?
Yeah.
If it does pass, you will get the specific information.
At what point, do you know?
During the work session.
Okay.
Anyone else? Those are the two people that indicated they wanted to speak before the agenda. Anyone else who would like to address the council before the agenda? Okay, thank you. Moving down to the next item, the minutes from the March 12 meeting. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So move.
Mr. Perry?
Second.
Mr. Bilbo? On the question? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
No.
Mr. Irvin, any abstentions?
No.
Motion carries. Moving down to the item number one, the motion to adopt the resolution into a lease for a portion of land, the Luzerne County Sports Complex area in 44 Borough for the use of the 44th Soccer Club.
So move.
Mr. Schnee?
Second.
Mr. Kelleher? On the question?
On the question, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
On page 15, council members, I'm looking at item number six, the liability and casualty insurance.
Page 15?
Yep. Yes, indeed.
This one goes to page 12. Mr. Haas?
It says pages 13 to 21 for this-
For number one, order to 12.
I am remiss. I'll hold off for item number two. Sorry about that.
No problem. Anyone else? Mr. Irvin?
Yeah. Mr. Griffith commented about the effective date of this. Can we get a comment from the solicitor on that?
Sure.
Absolutely. Actually, what the charter says is that resolution shall be effective six days from adoption unless otherwise specified in the resolution. There are times when we have to specify an immediate passage of the resolution due to time constraints. We are allowed to do that, and in the case of the resolutions that Mr. Griffith has alluded to, there are time constraints.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Trzynski, you wanted to comment on agenda items?
Just hopefully to say counsel for their support.
Moving to item number two, motion to adopt a resolution entering into a lease for a portion
They voted on the agenda, that's all.
of the land, Luzerne County Sports Complex area in 44 Borough. That's all? Because your indication is that you would comment on an agenda item?
So move.
Only people have questions.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Schnee and Mr. Irvin? So Mr. Trzynski is here. He's the 44 Borough Mayor, and he was here with us two weeks ago, correct? Now, Mr. Haas?
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I think at that point, he answered a lot of our questions, and I think it was
Yeah, item number six about the liability and casualty on that, do we have a figure
quite evident at that point that 44 Borough, the mayor and the council was in support
about how much that's going to save our own insurance from management? I don't know if you have that available, because I'm sure it's going to yield some-
of this.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I don't know offhand, but I'll find that out for you.
44 Council has gone record by passing a resolution prior to this meeting, authorizing
Okay. Yeah, I'd appreciate it. Doesn't really change my mind about the passing this. I think it's a good idea. It's probably a win-win for 44 for Luzerne County and the people of Luzerne County, so,
44 Borough to engage in the proposed legal, we're good on our end.
but it would be helpful to, Mr. Manager, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. Seeing none, roll call, please. Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Schnee? Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Irvin? Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Wakis?
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
You're right around, look at the condition of the roads, look at the condition of the houses. I mean, they're not, they're not in good shape. And again, I say, you know, we on council here, we're fortunate. I think some of us got good retirements and good incomes. That's not what I see in this county.
If you remember that parcel up there in the Humboldt, the Iris Corporation purchased, they got a Lerdah on that too. It just, I know some, I don't know if every member was here, but they said, "We want the parcel." The Lerdah was immaterial. They liked the infrastructure that was there, right by the rail. They liked the proximity to the markets. This place, again, we are in this corridor that this time and place, that a lot of real estate on it is very valuable. And developers know it, and the commerce knows it. So why are we helping them take advantage of something they already know? It's just inherently unfair to people that aren't that savvy, that don't have the means to go after these kind of tax abatement programs.
Well, just to summarize a little bit, we are not authorizing a Lerdah.
I understand.
This allows for a public hearing, which means the public will have an opportunity and go and voice their opinions and provide information. If we don't have the public hearing, the public won't have that. So I think at this point in time, a public hearing is some, a part of the process, and I believe that's an opportunity for the public to make their opinions known. And that's the way I look at it at this point in time. Once we get back to the point that we're asking for a Lerdah, I think that's a whole different scenario. And as you know, the county is always the last taxing body to be involved in that. The municipality and the school district are the first two. So there'll be opportunities for those people, the municipality and the school district, to provide input. And Mr. Urban's right, because they request something doesn't mean that the Lerdah will look like anything that they request. It all depends on the negotiation or what comes down. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Moving down to number six, motion to adopt the resolution, adopting an approving amendment to the Articles of Incorporation of the Northeastern Pennsylvania Hospital and Education Authority as proposed by resolution of the Board of the Authority. Sending forth a proposed amendment authorizing said authority and proper officers therefore to execute, verify, and file appropriate articles of amendment and repealing all the ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith.
So move.
Okay, Mr. Schnee?
Second.
Mr. Bilbo? Mr. Attorney Moses is here. This was the request, Attorney Moses, in order to lengthen your timeframe so that you would have an opportunity to provide King's College the opportunity in the next item?
Yes, King's College is a 30-year amateurization. And as it exists right now...
Would you go to the podium so people can hear, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Currently, under the Articles that we've incorporated, under the authority would cease to exist in 2046. King's College came to us with a bond deal that will be amateurized over a 30-year period, which would take us to 2049. So in order for us to accomplish the bond deal and to do the bond deal, we have to extend the life of the authority.
Okay. And you'd have to make the application to the state and do all the things that are associated with that?
Assuming that you approve the resolution, we then have to advertise that in the legal register in one local newspaper for two weeks, and then we file the Articles of Incorporation with the state.
Any questions? Attorney Moses is there at the podium if someone has a question in this regard. If not, we have a motion from Mr. Schnee, a second from Mr. Bilbo. Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving down to number seven, Attorney Moses is still there. Motion to adopt a resolution approving financing by the Northeastern Pennsylvania Hospital and Education Authority assert projects for the benefit of King's College, a not-for-profit corporation declaring that is desirable for health, safety, and welfare of the people of County Luzerne, Pennsylvania, and the areas served by King's College to have the projects provided by and financed through the authority, and authorizing other necessary and appropriate action.
So move.
Mr. Kelleher?
Second.
Second was Mr. Urban. Thank you. Questions for Attorney Moses?
Yes, Mr. Ross? Yeah, Mr. Moses, welcome to council again. Good to see you. Has the university, or college, rather, have they come into you to talk about any payments in lieu of taxes in light of Luzerne County coming on board and helping them assist in this endeavor?
Right, well, John Loyack, who's the CFO of King's, is here tonight.
Oh, if you're going, it's Mr. Loyack.
And I think he can address that with you, because I do believe that, I do believe that he has been in contact with county officials about some things that King's College
Fantastic.
is doing, if you'd like to hear from him.
Would you please come to the podium? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Pedry and the college, myself, have been working on an agreement where the college would provide certain services to the county in recognition for the services that the county provides to the college. So we're very close to completing that and appreciate your support on the bond offering as well.
Very good.
Hats off to you, Mr. Manager, as well.
Yeah, not to ruin the surprise on this show, like, any ideas about what, what that agreement might entail?
I don't know if we're ready for that.
Can you get into generalities?
Harry, I don't know if we're ready for that at this point. I think it's, it's an agreement that we're trying to work out with, with also the city of Wokesbury could also be involved as well. That would be mutually, mutually beneficial to everybody involved. And also a recognition of what the county does for, for King's and what King's does for our community as well.
And they're doing, like I said last meeting, I don't know if you were aware of that too, Mr. Ross, like, I appreciate, I personally appreciate what King's is, they're a great partner and things like that.
Well, thank you.
But, you know, we, again, we're looking to meet the bottom line, just like the colleges as well. So I appreciate you and the board of directors as well to consider that, so.
We definitely are working with David to get to that point, so.
Very good. All right, thank you again.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good must, good luck, Mr. Loyack. You're going to be with us only a short time at this point.
Thank you very much.
And you'll be moving on to a new endeavor?
Yes, sir.
Which, which university or college?
Alberni University.
Alberni.
Very good.
Good luck. Number eight, adopt the resolution committing a local match for the state operating assistance for the Hazelton Public Transit.
So move.
And Mr. Second, Mr. Bilbo? Mr. Sharp is with us. Questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Mr. Sharp, you want to come to the podium, please? Mr. Urban?
Got a couple of questions. You're, you're not an authority, are you?
We are not.
Okay, you're, you're an agency...
We're a department of the city.
You're a department of Hazelton City?
Yes.
Right, you're in a department, and you are coming to us looking for a match. You get a federal match and you're looking for us to pay the other half, correct?
We get a state fund, a state operating assistance.
Right, just like we get at LCTA, and then you're looking for us to pay the difference.
Pardon me?
You're looking for us to pay the difference.
We're, we're looking for help with our local match.
No, you're looking for us to pay the, the difference, right?
Yes.
Okay, so how much revenue do you get in ridership every year? And where does that go?
That goes to our operating expenses. We're a, we contract out service.
Right, I know that.
So our, our income from our ridership goes back into our transit system to, for operating expenses.
Right, so, so what is your real, what is your real budget? I mean, that's, I guess that's what I'm getting at. You're, you're asking for, you get state money, and in order to get the state money, you need a match from somebody.
Correct.
Right, and so you're asking for Luzerne County to pay for the match for an agency that was set up by the city of Hazelton?
Our operating expenses for the year are roughly about $2.2 million.
Right, okay.
We take in from ridership revenues round maybe close to $500,000.
Okay.
So the state operating assistance grant that we get helps us for our service.
Right, right. Where's your budget? Is it posted on your website anywhere?
Yes.
It's on your website?
When I was here last year prior, we were, had a few things missing, and we're in compliance with everything.
Okay, so it's all on the, it's all on the website?
Yes, it is. Righththtt.com.
All right, you, you provide any money back to the city?
We, we do not, we, we, any funds that are taken in within transit have to stay in the transit system, so we cannot give the city any money.
And how does transit relate to the airport?
Transit and the airport are two separate entities.
Because you're, you're in the airport too, right? Are you in the airport? Hazelton Airport Authority, you have anything to do with Hazelton Airport?
No, my title for the city of Hazelton is Director of Public Services, Hazelton Public Transit.
Okay.
So basically, what happens is if any decisions need to be made towards, within the airport, I kind of talk with them and, but I don't do a day-to-day operations at the airport. My main job is at the transit agency.
And the city of Hazelton gives you no money?
None.
None at all?
No.
Why? Have you ever gone to mayor, to the mayor and say, "Mayor, I need some money, put it in your budget"? Or does he say, "No, go down to Luzerne County and get it"?
Well, my understanding, the way it's been, the city really, to be honest, never gave transit anything towards local match.
Right, I mean, that's, 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 that's the question that I'm finally starting to realize. At first, I thought you were, you were a separate authority, but you're not. You're, you're basically an entity of the city, of Hazelton. So what we're doing, we're supplementing Hazelton City's budget because they don't want to fund you. Mayor, because that doesn't want to put any money in, in his budget to fund Hazelton Transit, which is a part of the city. It's not, it's not a separate agency. He doesn't want to do that. And a couple of years back, when, actually about six...
Well, I, I think in turn, we, we can't give the city any money from our agency, so I'm, I'm assuming that's why the city doesn't in turn give us any funds.
Right, but the city set up the transit. The county didn't set up the transit, did it? The city set up the transit?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so that's, that's what I was trying to get at. But he doesn't want to put any money in the budget for your agency or whatever you call it, for your department?
I, I don't think that he doesn't want to. I, I, to be honest, the current position that our cities, we're in Act 47 right now?
Well, so what?
There's no money.
Oh, there's money. Believe me, there's money.
Well, find it.
He's got, and I don't, I don't work in the...
They don't have money.
He has money. He, he pays his expenses. He's got people on the payroll down there. He's, he's, he's running, he's got an ability to tax. He's got his own budget authority. What, what I'm really getting at is, is that we have been for years, and I'm just finding this out, we have been for years supplementing the city of Hazelton's budget by giving money to the transit authority, because the mayor doesn't want to put any money in the budget for the transit authority. It's a separate authority or a separate branch. He said it's a separate branch of the city. It's just like, okay, the city of Wokesbury is broke. Let's put a million dollars in the county budget and just give it to the city of Wokesbury for their parking garage. If they come in and do it, would you do it? Would you give the city that, a million dollars?
I don't think any of the authorities in Hazelton...
Well, this is not, they are not an authority.
No, they're not, they're not.
They're a department of the city, that's...
They're a part of the city, so we're supplementing the city. This, this, this funding is supplementing the city budget. And that's, that's what, that's what I'm, I'm starting to realize now. It's not a separate authority. When we, when the commissioners were here, we asked that agency, or whatever they were, to join the LCTA. We would bring them in. There was a state study that was done that recommended they come in. We appointed two people from the city to the board, but then at the, then they decided not to come in. They decided not to join LCTA. Why should they join LCTA? Because the city keeps on sending representatives down here for the county to help the city with their budget. We don't give any money to the city of Pittston. We don't give any money to the city of Nanticoop. We don't give any money to the city of Wokesbury. But we're giving money to the city of Hazelton. This is a Hazelton department, as he said. It's not an authority, just because it's labeled transportation. They want us to pay for their department expenses.
Well, going back, Mr. Urban, you're correct. When the commissioners were leaving office and the home rule was coming into office, the commissioner did do that. They appointed two people from the greater Hazelton area, and the state was pushing for a merger, I believe would be the proper word. Since that time, the state has backed off of that and chose not to force or implement that merger. So that, Hazelton Transit has stayed on its own. There was a period of time where even the funding from the state came to LCTA and then went back to Hazelton Transit. That has, the state has stopped that practice. They get their money directly. They don't have to go through the LCTA. So obviously, the state has changed their mind in how they reviewed that merger. And back in 2012, 2013, very early on, it was very clear to us that the transit authority, it's not an authority, the transit department was a city department and was not part of an authority. And we've been aware of that since early on in the home rule. So that's where we are at this point in time. You know, if that's going to change, something is going to have to happen with the Hazelton as far as that part of it. But at this point, they're looking for a match in order to leverage the funds that would come from Pendon, and that's where we are.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How long have you been in existence, Mr. Sharp?
The Hazelton Public Transit became an authority, I believe, and it was an authority originally, an authority originally in 1983. In 1990, it became a department of the city of Hazelton.
How long has the county been matching your need?
I, I'm the director for Hazelton Public Transit, six years, and you, you have been doing it. So when Bob Sharp was the director for Hazelton Public, so it was far back as the 90s, since the 90s, since, since it became a department of the city.
Yeah, this has been ongoing. This is not a new process.
So this was being matched before we had home rule charter?
Well, before.
Yes.
And the other two counties were asked to chip in a small amount?
That is correct.
How is your talks, your negotiation going, going with them?
I have a meeting tomorrow with Schoolkill County, tomorrow morning. Carbon County, we spoke with, and they told us they would get back to us this, the end of this week, because they were at a conference.
Because the amount that they're being asked to chip in is small?
Yeah, Schoolkill County's amount, their contribution is, would be $3,086.
Yeah, it's small.
And Carbon County's contribution is $15,260, so which is roughly about, what is that, $18,340-some dollars. If you, if you would approve this, I would be more than happy when I meet whatever Schoolkill County gives us, whether it be $1,000, $2,000, whatever, I will gladly reimburse Luzerne County with that money. And the same goes with Carbon County also. There, there, there wouldn't be an issue with that at all.
And the amount we're being asked to reimburse or match?
Luzerne County amount is $153,117.
Now, but you're asking for the, all the...
I, I'm asking for the full amount.
Which is $170,000.
Which is $171,463. And then if Schoolkill would give us any funds and Carbon would give us any funds, I would give them back to Luzerne County.
Okay, Mr. Ross?
Yeah, you know, I appreciate Mr. Urban's diligence, just asking the right questions and looking about evaluating why things have been done the way they have been done, and perhaps we can do something better. That's what home rule government's all about. I think that's very reasonable. But I, I just have some reservations about that. A couple of things. First of all, your service area is, it's outside the city and involves destinations in Butler Township. It's in West Hazelton.
We don't, no.
You showed me a map before, a couple of years ago.
Our service area consists of all of Hazelton, West Hazelton. Then we do go into McAdoo, Freeland, which is in Luzerne County. We go to, in Carbon County, we service Weatherly, Beaver Meadows, Tresco, June Dale, and we come through Geneville.
So it is, it is the metro area. It's not just Hazelton City, so you're outside. And I have no problem supporting that, because we are Luzerne County. We want to support projects like this for all our residents.
Correct. We, we do have a, a lot of ridership in the outlying counties that we bring them into Luzerne County. So they're, they're employed in Luzerne County. So businesses in Luzerne County are benefiting from our, our, our system.
Right, so I mean, on, on paper, it's not an authority, however, it acts like an authority. It serves multiple jurisdictions, right? Hazelton Public Transit. Also, I don't think Wokesbury City pays into Luzerne County Transportation Authority. I, I don't think I'm off in that.
No, we're the only, we provide the local match for LCTA.
That is, that is the hub. We've got the multimodal center right there, a public square, so clearly benefits Wokesbury City as well. So I, I see this one and the same. I have no problem supporting that portion. What Mr. Kelleher brought up, I, I agree with him about asking that type of question, that I do take issue with. And I would like to make an amendment, since we don't have the, the, the total cooperation yet with the other two counties. It's only $18,346. It's not going to break, make or break our budget, but as I said two meetings ago, two weeks ago, rather, you know, it, $18,000 here and there adds up. It adds up for Luzerne County government and the taxpayers. So if, I would prefer us to postpone this, since I believe, Mr. Sharp, you told me last meeting that June 1st was the deadline, that we have to...
Well, that's when our fiscal year starts, June 1st.
Your fiscus, so a little before, then we need to have the note.
We need to have the, I need a resolution in place. Actually, I don't have the exact date, to be honest, but it needs to be, it needs to be done as soon as possible. Normally, I know LCTA would come in April, so they have their information in place, so.
And I really think the commissioners...
What's your amendment, Mr. Ross?
Well, I'm just saying, before I make the amendment, I believe the commissioners of those neighboring counties are reasonable, and I think they would have no problem supporting that. But again, trust, but verify. And I would like us to postpone this in anticipation and expectation that Carbon and Schoolkill would, would come together and pay for what's rightfully their part of the program.
Like I said, I would have no problem reimbursing Luzerne County if, if we did get the funds. I just want to get this in place so I have it and I could submit all my paper into Pendon.
I understand. It's like tax season when your returns, and I totally get that. But at the same time, I think it's much more clean, Mr. Chairman, if the amendment could stand, if, if we could postpone this, that would, that would be my first, my first motion. Postpone this. You said you're going to meet over the next couple of days with both?
Motion to postpone this agreement, resolution, okay. On that, motion, questions?
Mr. Sharp, does that present any problem with you with timing?
No, it shouldn't, if I could come back at the next, next meeting, and I should know with Carbon County, I'm, like I said, I'm meeting tomorrow. Carbon, I'm just waiting as, they're supposed to get back to us this, the end of this week, because they were away at a conference.
So we have a motion, and by Mr. Haas, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Urban? Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Okay. Motion for postponed carries, so beyond the next meeting schedule, which would be April the 9th. Moving down to number nine, motion to adopt the resolution approving agreement with the Borough of Cortdale for Luzerne County Treasurer to collect the taxes for the Borough of Cortdale.
So move.
Mr. Kelleher?
Second.
Mr. Vogt?
On the question?
On the question.
What exactly is going on there? Could somebody give an explanation?
I think there is a gentleman here, correct?
Yes.
Would you come to the podium, please? I believe you're here two weeks ago, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you are Mr. Carl?
Hotarowski.
Hotarowski, very good. And what position do you have with the borough?
President of council.
You're the president of the council.
Yes, sir.
Did you hear Mr. Schnee's question?
Uh, yes, what's going on?
Yeah.
We actually had a resignation by our, actually our existing tax collector. She came to an, our January 15th meeting and gave her resignation. And I know tax bills were actually ready to print for the 24th, going out February 4th. We had a meeting in February, and we actually did move to appoint someone, but then we found out from our solicitor that the appointment was actually invalid, because we did it by motion instead of resolution, the way it was supposed to be done. We don't have a vacancy board to appoint a person, so that's fault of Cortdale Borough and shame on us for not actually having a vacancy board, which we are going to address at our next meeting with that. So, I mean, actually, right now, we're just in a bind. We did have a person come forward to actually run for tax collector for this upcoming, the final two years of the existing tax collector's term. But right now, we're just in a bind. We need to get bills out. She didn't take, you know, there is a, a six-hour class that needs to be taken. There's a bond issue to get bonded as well for tax collectors. So we're just in a, in a time crunch right now, and we're asking the county if they could, for this year, for this, for this year, take over our tax collection for Cortdale Borough and for the municipal tax, is what we're asking.
Well, I'll make a statement.
Okay.
If it's too late for this year, I'll support you 100%. But I'm 100% in support of a taxpayer, a tax collector.
Yes, okay, yes, absolutely.
I took my grandparents to tax collectors when they were old. I mean, their service that they provide, just older people themselves, you can't put a dollar value on.
Agreed, agreed. And like I said, I mean, right now, we're just in a bind. We don't have a tax collector. We need to get bills out. We need, we're $214,000 budget in, in Cortdale Borough, and we're way behind right now on bringing money into the, into the borough right now. So, but like I said, there is somebody that actually is in the petition. They did, they are on the ballot, should be on the ballot for this year for fulfilling the two-year term that's current right now for the existing tax collector. She had two years left on her term, so.
I have...
Go ahead, Jane.
Go ahead, Jane.
I have a question.
Okay.
Now, I'm assuming, I might, I might have asked this last time you were here.
Okay.
You did not have, you do not have a deputy tax collector in Cortdale?
Do not, no.
Okay, have you reached out to any adjacent tax collectors? I believe that's permissible to reach out to a, a neighboring tax collector?
Yeah, we haven't. I know our existing, in fact, I don't know what Pringle did, because they actually, she was actually collecting for two municipalities, us and Pringle Borough. So I don't know what Pringle did. Like I said, I mean, when this all came down and we were in a crunch, I mean, I did call over to, you know, to Laura and, you know, ask the question, you know, what do we do? What, you know, and, you know, she graciously said that, you know, she, she would have the, you know, the capability to get our bills out, do the collecting for this, for this year, for our municipal, for municipal taxes and for the county's taxes for this, you know, this year.
What I don't understand is the, I think you said it was a lady who resigned in January?
Yes, January 15th. She came to our meeting.
In March.
I understand that.
So what happened between January and February?
We were just waiting to get on, onto, you know, onto the county council with an agenda, actually with Laura, you know, working that way. And then actually, I mean, we, when we went to our, when we went to our February meeting, that's when we found out that the appointment, you know, it was just done by motion, and our solicitor said it was, you know, invalid, that we needed a resolution, and it should be filled by vacancy board, which we didn't have. So, you know, that already took us into the end of February with that, so. You can go tomorrow, though, and set up a vacancy board. If you can call a special meeting, set up a vacancy board, and you can appoint somebody tomorrow. The problem is, we, we don't know who to appoint. I mean, we have nobody to appoint, you know, to, to actually take over our councils, you know. I mean, right now, even on our town I mean, right now, even on our town council, it's a seven-member council. We have six members on. And actually, after this year, we're going to lose another one. We're going to go down to five, because she's not running for reelection. Nobody will step forward in the municipality to, to do anything.
Yeah, I, I understand that is a problem. However, if, if notice were put out to the good citizens of Cortdale, it's hard to believe that you couldn't find three to serve on a vacancy board. It's not like a vacancy board meets even once a month.
Right, yeah, exactly.
It rarely meets. I'm, I'm very concerned about your situation, obviously. I don't want to see the Borough suffer at all.
I couldn't agree more.
I just think there's more here than meets the eye.
Mr. Haas has.
Yeah, Mr. Haas, welcome back again. You know, there's no shame, there's no shame, local government is hard.
It is.
We're seeing, just like, I was just about to say, you know, we can't find poll workers, we can't find council members, it's our, we can't have more than, fill six seats on the Republican Party for Luzerne County Council. Maybe we're doing such a great job, maybe that's why, there's not that, that interest. All right, and I hear the groans out there. But it is a problem, and, you know, again, I just see the, my idea of government is, we want to support our municipalities. And I just say, we call the question, Mr. Chair, and support Cortdale at this time of need.
Like I said, I mean, we're really in a bind, I mean, hopefully, it's going to, you know, with the election, it'll rectify, and we can move past this right now. But like I said, we just, you know, like I said, the alternative for us right now was the fact that the county's there, they, they have the capabilities of collecting our tax for this coming year. And everybody that was on council, and we have, even our mayor, I mean, she's a, you know, she's retired, she's a senior citizen, and she has no problem mailing her tax bill in, you know, as opposed to come to the, you know, to the Borough bill and to pay, so.
If I may, I, I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Schnee.
Right.
I think that if this is a, you know, time is of the essence now.
It is.
For Cortdale, and for, you know, for a little borough like that. So if this is, like, for this year, because this is what, this is what, this is what needs to be done, because the shot clock is, is running. You know, but I, I do agree, especially in such little towns, where there may be so many elderly people, like, the value of a tax collector and them knowing.
I agree.
The service that they get and who they can talk to. But my question is, does the Borough have a mechanism, or are you guys putting something in place moving forward, so that, God forbid, if this happens again, there is a deputy? Is there, is somebody working on a plan?
Lessons learned. It's, yeah, we, we definitely learned from this one, it was definitely a learning. I mean, this is the first time we, you know, I mean, she, she was tax collector for 13 years that I know of, you know, so we'd never run into a situation like this. And even with the, the motion as opposed to resolution, you know, it just became a time crunch.
Yeah, I, I know how important the tax collector is in a town.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And like I said, I mean, you know, if, you know, she is on, she is running for election to fulfill the, the remaining two terms of what used to be Maria Bochi, who was our tax collector, she's, she actually, you know, she's running on the ticket to, to fill those two terms, so.
Two years.
Or two years, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Yep.
With that, those statements. If you look at page 74 of the packet that you have in front of you, there is a section under there that, number two term. So, Mr. Crocamo, when will the agreement begin? March?
It begins March 12th, 2019.
Well, we didn't pass it on March 12th, around 26th.
Well, then it would be the date that is filled in when the agreement is made. Up at the top, there's two blank.
Okay, so the date from the first paragraph, and my, my amendment would be that the child stands through 12/31/19, which would complete the year for you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Instead of January 31st, 2020.
We'll amend the agreement to that.
So, that's my amendment, 12/31/19. Do I have a second for that amendment?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kelleher. All in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, any in opposition?
No.
Any abstentions? Mr. Swets?
So again, I believe that dates because of the postmark, it's not to start the next year. So the January date that was in the resolution is because, again, if it's postmarked by 12/31, it gives the taxpayer.
Not 2020, is it?
No, it should just be, it should just be the postmark into 2020. So if we receive it in 2020, then it covers the 2019, that's why it was worded that way. But we understand it's for one period, we're fine either way. But that's why it was written that way.
Okay, but we want to make it correct.
Yes.
So what is the proper date in order to allow this year's taxes?
The date that was on the resolution is the proper date.
January 31?
Yes, and that's because they have until, things can go to tax claim, as we know from when we do the budget presentation, not 100% of the people pay.
Okay.
That does not sneak anything into the next year. That's to give time for anything to be postmarked to December.
So that will allow the completion of the 19th.
It will complete the 19th, they have till January 15th.
Then I withdraw my amendment?
They have till January 15th to get their books in, so that's why that dates in there.
Someone withdraw their second?
So, I will.
I got a question.
Going to question.
I got a question of Mr. Petry. This is not only taxes for the Borough of Cortdale, the county taxes are included on that bill.
That's correct.
And I want to know why the county didn't bring this to our attention in February. This, this thing probably could have been resolved in February, had this been brought to our attention. It wasn't brought to our attention until the last meeting.
When, when we found out about it, we, we reached out to the solicitor's office to get it on the agenda at the county council.
Wait, you didn't know when the tax bills were being printed up in, in February or January? That they didn't have a tax collector?
I'm aware of tax bills being, but I wasn't aware of Cortdale's issue until it came to your agenda, actually.
Obviously, there's a lack of communication then between the treasurer's office and your office, because you should have known about it, because that's our money, too, that hasn't been collected. Correct?
Sure.
Yeah.
You know, the bills have not been mailed.
Right, exactly, for county taxes and municipal taxes.
Well, the bill includes both.
Yeah, I know, it includes both. And so, the manager should have let us know that the bills hadn't gone out for the Borough of Cortdale. And maybe some different path would be taken at that time, back in January or February, instead of going through this path now.
Well, I think the, if I'm correct in saying this, I think the council was, became aware in January, by the time you tried to do some things, it was February.
Yes.
And that's when you became aware they had a problem.
Well, we went to our February meeting, that's when, you know, like I said, we appointed, or we made a motion to appoint someone, but then we found out.
Found out from the solicitor that it wasn't valid.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, our solicitor stepped in on that one, so.
His council, this council I'm talking about, I'm talking about Mr. Petry not informing this council that the bills had gone out.
I understand what you're doing, Mr. Urban.
Okay, that's.
But I'm just saying that until they made a decision how they were going to deal with it, we were not involved. Once they made their decision, unfortunately, they found out that one of the decisions was not valid because of timing.
Right, yes, yes.
And then by the time you got that information and came forward, it was February.
Yes.
And, you know, they were here the, two weeks ago.
And I think, I think it was in the paper, the, I know I saw in the newspaper that, that the tax bills for Cortdale Borough were going, going to be delayed because of tax collector, tax collector.
That part was in the paper.
So it wasn't in the paper. I think sometime in February, I think, I think it was, or, I don't, okay.
So the agreement as presented is what we're voting on. Mr. Kelleher made the motion, Mr. Vog made the second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes, I'm voting aye, because it's for one term, one year only.
Thank you.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Eight to one, motion carries. Moving down to number 10, Luzerne County Council member nominations and appointments to the Luzerne Wyoming County's Mental Health and Developmental Services Program Advisory Board. The term would go to April 1st of 2020. Currently, Ms. Wakus serves in that position, and is, she's indicated a, an interest to continue, but we'll have a motion to open the nominations.
So move.
Mr. Kelleher?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Haas. All in favor of opening nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motions are now open. Nominations are now open.
I would like to nominate Jane.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Bilbo? Motion to close nominations?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Kelleher, Mr. Schnee, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition, any abstentions, none heard. And I'll have a resolution to appoint Ms. Jane Wakus as the representative of Luzerne County Council to the Luzerne County Mental Health and Developmental Services Program Advisory Board. Roll call, please.
Make the motion?
Motion for the resolution?
Did we have the first?
No. We need a motion for the appointment?
Motion.
Motion, who's that, Mr. Vog?
Mr. Bilbo.
Mr. Bilbo?
For second.
And, Mr. Schnee?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving down to number 11, Authority Boards and Commissions, nominations and appointments. We have one position that we declared a vacancy the last time we met, which is a member of the Luzerne County Transportation Authority. We have a motion to open nominations.
So move.
Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Vog?
Yep.
All in favor of opening nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. We're now open for nominations.
I nominate Mr. Cephalo.
Second.
Mr. Schnee, and Mr. Vog?
Yep.
Yes.
Any other nominations?
Nominate Thomas Grimes.
Mr. Grimes. Mr. Urban, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Haas? Anyone else?
Motion to close nominations?
Mr. Vog?
Second.
Motion closed, Mr. Schnee, second. All in favor of closing nominations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, nominations are now closed. We have two gentlemen, whose names have been presented to go into the vacancy of the Luzerne County Transportation Authority. We'll do a roll call, please indicate whether you support Mr. Cephalo or Mr. Grimes, please.
Mr. Kelleher?
Mr. Cephalo.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Cephalo.
Mr. Schnee?
Mr. Cephalo.
Mr. Urban?
Mr. Grimes.
Mr. Vog?
Mr. Cephalo.
Ms. Wakus?
Mr. Cephalo.
Mr. Bilbo?
Mr. Cephalo.
Mr. Haas?
Mr. Grimes.
Mr. McInley?
Mr. Cephalo.
Seven, Mr. Cephalo.
Seven, two. Seven, two, motion carries. Mr. Cephalo will now, we need a motion to nominate him by resolution for the position. Mr. Schnee?
Second.
Mr. Vog? Another question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Seven, two, motion carries.
I have a question, before we move on. I just want to give you a little background on the extreme talent that is in the Luzerne, in, in the Valley here. That gentleman that just was appointed has three different engineering majors. The man, the man's brilliant, but that's just the kind of talent that we have applying for these boards.
I agree, Mr. Schnee, we have had excellent candidates come forward and offer their services on many of the different authorities, boards, and commissions. And I think that, in this particular case, I reviewed all the resumes of the four gentlemen that were listed, and they're all very good. I thought Mr. Cephalo's resume was excellent.
Got a question? Yeah, I'm, I'm about to, no, he, he doesn't work in the Valley, he, he works in Springfield, Pennsylvania, so I don't know how he's going to make the meetings.
Well, he's a resident.
I don't care if he's a resident or not.
Of Luzerne County.
The question is making the meetings.
I don't disagree with it, if he can't make the meetings, then that will be an issue, but that's something they'll have to.
The last gentleman was appointed and was there about a couple of months and decided to resign because he's out of town.
He was there fif, about 15 months.
Whatever, he resigned, so.
Yeah. Right, his, if you remember from his letter, his business changed, and he felt he didn't have the time to be able to commit to that. But it was a very kind letter, and, and obviously, we respect the gentleman for indicating that. Okay? Moving to public comment. Let's see, I think my friend wants to speak first, what do you think? Joe? Joe McCabe?
Joe McCabe from Exeter. Mr. McInley, off the record, I'd like to commend you for being a referee in wrestling, I couldn't believe your picture in the paper. But also, one of your co-referees, Joe Bartel from Wyoming, said they have to pick you up off the floor every time there's a match, is that true?
I think Mr. Bartel has embellished his comments.
But go on with the meeting. My question is, last year, we say, we received a state grant, Luzerne County, on the road, fixing roads and that, and Luzerne County put a 5% tax on.
$5.
Is the state, is the county going to apply for a state grant again, or did they already do it?
Well, I think, Mr. Petry?
We just received a, we just received a grant today, I was going to talk about in the work session, we received a $200,000 grant today for Hanover Industrial Park that we're able to utilize.
Yeah, but did we apply for the new grant for this year coming?
Correct, we're, we're currently applying, actually, for three roads grants.
Because it's interesting, because last year, we had a county member say that if we didn't receive the state grant, he was going to make a motion to rescind the county 5% tax, so I'm waiting to see what happens.
I think, I think the, I think he was referring to the state match.
Yeah, the match, yeah, okay. Okay, that issue, okay. The Water Street Bridge, last year around this time, I brought it to council's attention, they really went at it, and they didn't put blacktop in the hole where it popped up all the time on a cement bridge. And I told them, I said, you don't have to be an engineer to realize what you're doing. So the council got together, and they went, and they shut it down for three days, and they put cement in, which they should have at the beginning with, and the road, there's not one pothole on, and maybe you'll find a small one, but I'd like to congratulate council for doing that. And it's probably nine months now, and there's no potholes. One more thing, about a month ago, you had an inspection of the bridge. Could I have an update? Did it pass the inspection or anything? Was that a state inspection, or was that a county?
I'm not aware of the inspection results, Mr..
Yeah, they shut it down for a couple of days.
Mr. O'Neil, do you have the results on that, or do we hear back?
We have the results at this point, but I can make sure that they're mailed to you, and we can forward those to council.
Sure.
You know, I was a little leery, because before I come into the meeting, a guy approached me, and he said, gee, Joe, I heard the two bridges in Pittson's going to be shut down and replaced with a bridge in between the two that's already there. You guys didn't hear anything on that, right?
That would be news to us.
Well, okay, you know, rumors gets around, but, okay, Luzerne going to change the way. Okay, you know, Mr. Urban's the only one that I see in the paper concerned about the water runoff the water runoff as council members, and I was wondering, does Luzerne County pay any fee on the, on this new fee?
I think, if I read the paper correctly for, earlier today on, on the websites, I believe that commercial properties were sent their bills.
Yeah, but would you receive one in Luzerne County, or no?
I would think we would, but-
Because you know why Valley West School District, when it first happened, their tax is going to be $54,000. You know, between me and you and Mr. Haas, that, you know who's going to end up paying that? The taxpayers, and we don't deserve it. So I was wondering if the county council can get on board and fight this with the people of Luzerne County.
Well, it's, it would be very good for us to fight it if we had any influence and control. Unfortunately, as you well know, that's a separate entity, the Wyoming Valley Sanitation Authority.
I understand that, but-
Obviously, I don't think there's anyone seated at this table who likes the fact that they now have a stormwater runoff.
Yeah, but don't you think council members are going to be upset down the road if you get hit with a couple million dollar fee every year?
Everyone will be upset, not just us.
Yeah.
Because it'll all come back on everyone, as you just indicated.
Good luck, and I hope yous can get on board. And I'd like to commend Steve Urban.
Well-
He was a watchdog as a council, or as a county controller. He's a watchdog as councilman. Now we have one other watchdog, well, two, Mrs. Houck and, uh, Mr. Haas, and, uh, like to, in your future, I'd like to congratulate you with anything you do. And once again, thank you for your service.
Well, what I'd like to say is, is thank you for coming to the meetings and keeping us informed about what's going on in the county and what needs to be done. But also, I'd like to recommend to the council, as soon as the manager gets the bill, that the council solicitor, look at that bill and consider filing a lawsuit on behalf of the county and the people of this county. Once we get the bill, then we got a cause of action.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Troy?
He's going.
Yeah, okay, he's not there. Um, Mr. Adorowski? Yeah, okay, you don't want to come to the podium. Uh, Mr. Griffin?
Hello, citizens, council, and, uh, Mr. Bilbo, welcome.
Thank you.
I didn't speak before you, but, uh, I'm a member of the Citizens Opioid Committee, and we've been meeting with county council, city council, Wilkes-Barre and city council in Hazleton since September. And, uh, we all know there's a big problem with the opioid epidemic. And in today's newspaper, Citizens Voice, it says, "Act now to diminish carnage of fentanyl." Carnage. And it's encouraging to see more media participation. Uh, it talks about the death rates, and we've had 500 citizens killed in five years, four record years. Uh, we're seventh in the state for death rate. And, uh, one of the paragraphs that he, here says, "The situation calls for an all-out war on fentanyl at every step of its production and distribution chain." An all-out war. So this is, you know, and I know Mr. Vog, he's, he's taking the bull by the horns with the treatment issues, and maybe he could have a report later. Uh, I've spoken, we've spoken with Mr. Petry, and he's been helpful. And, uh, Mr. McInley has spoken with the Luzerne County Drug Task Force, trying to get them more funds. Uh, we were able to determine that July, uh, Luzerne County was passed by 10 DEA task force bypassed that was sent to the rest of the world, to the rest of the country. Uh, and the sad fact is, in Luzerne County, our death rate was higher than three quarters of the 10 counties that received the DEA task force. Now, this is, this is fully funded. Now, we talked about tax money tonight, but this is fully funded. We were able to get, uh, Hazleton council to write a letter to Senator Toomey and Senator Casey asking for consideration for a federal DEA task force, say DEA task force number 11. And I've been here before, and I distribute this, this material to, to all of you. Uh, Wilkes-Barre City is writing a letter right now to Senator Casey and Toomey for consideration. Senator Toomey has already asked the Justice, uh, the, uh, the Justice Department, uh, for consideration for a task force for Luzerne County. Now, task force involves, uh, a team of top drug detectives, help for coroner's office with advanced toxology tests, federal prosecutors that do their own court charges. Our district attorney would not have the, uh, the burden of more charges. They, um, they monitor pharmacies, doctors, and pursues predator drug dealers. So this is, this is fully funded. And so, it's something that we were bypassed by. And Senator Toomey, uh, Frank Maza, his top staffer, would like to hear from county council. And so, you could send him an email. You could say that, you know, "Please consider us for task force number 11." Uh, they would prop up the existing law enforcement, Wilkes-Barre PD, every police department, uh, with, with additional funds and expertise. So it's really a freebie for us if we ask for it, but we should all be a little bit disgusted that we were bypassed. And so, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave this, the flyer for the announcement from the Justice Department announcing the 10 task forces. It's called Operation Synthetic Opioid Surge. It was called SOS. It's catchy tune, but it usually means when a ship is sinking. So, of course, Luzerne County is, is in very much in peril. So, this is something we should definitely consider. I'll, I'll hand this, and you can give it to, uh, the chairman?
Yeah, well, uh, we'll have it sent out to each council people.
Thanks so much.
And if you hang out for a little bit in the work session, I think you'll see that there is some additional help coming.
Great.
The district attorney has-
Great.
-some help there that she's going to propose this evening.
Fantastic. Uh, Mr. Vog, uh, you're, you're going to be checking up on the treatment areas?
Yes, actually, I'm next to speak at the public comment.
Oh, great.
Yep, he's scheduled to come up.
We've had parents take out home equity loans, lost children in spite of it, for treatment, and it's just a horrible situation. They're being kicked loose into the streets after their medical expires, and so it's going to go on and on and on. So we have to address this-
Absolutely.
-like the newspaper says, on a war-type footing. Thank you.
Mr. Griffin?
I'd like to get a, um, under the cost of litigation for that Harrisburg law firm regarding the Marissa Chrisbell issue for the Bureau of Elections, if the taxpayers are ever going to get a breakdown of what that cost and what's remaining, or if we paid them additional monies other than the $20,000 that was allocated for that litigation. But more importantly, I don't understand why the taxpayers had to pay anything for that. We have a county manager whose task in the charter is to take care of personnel. Why did we even hire outside consultants to handle that personnel? I think it was an additional $20,000 that we didn't need to pay for as taxpayers for the litigation, or the uncovering, or the investigation, whatever way you want to term it. The county manager is a former prosecutor. He worked in DA's office for years. There's no reason in the world why we couldn't use the county manager for that task unless his expertise isn't good enough. But I think that's the job that the charter gives to the county manager in regard to personnel, is to discipline his own personnel. So, I'd like to get a breakdown of that. If I have to file a write-to-know, please let me know that, if I have to do that. I will do, uh, file a write-to-know to get the information on that one. A little concern on the county council being involved in the RFP process for election machines. I don't understand that process either. I think that the, uh, that stepping into the executive branch, he's responsible for RFPs. I don't know why council would be involved in that at all, unless you guys have a vested interest on what election machines we pick. I don't know. We could leave that up for speculation. Maybe we all know what kind of election machines we can tamper with here. Maybe that's the reason. I don't know. And the, the other issue is, i- if the solicitor, and I, you know, I really hate to ask questions about the solicitor, but if, in section 215 of the charter, I'll read it from Mr. Urban's edification, "All ordinances except emergency, temporary, and budgetary ordinances shall become effective 30 days after enactment unless a different effective date is specified in the, in the ordinance." That's an ordinance. A resolution shall become effective upon either the expiration of the time allowed for by the county manager to request reconsideration as provided for in section 212B of this charter, if no reconsiderations have been requested, or when county council confirms a resolution following a request by the county manager for reconsideration. Doesn't say that resolutions are adopted. It changed the date. Says ordinances, doesn't say resolutions. But I guess that's a legal interpretation from the Office of God. I'm not sure. But it clear, it clearly says ordinances in my charter. Doesn't say resolutions. Thank you.
Mr. Griffin, if you will get the next meeting, you inspect, Mr. Croquemont?
Next meeting.
Do I have a final invoicing for the investigation?
Investigation.
So that will be available at the next meeting.
An interpretation on a resolution in the charter? Another, as to why the resolutions are changed for different dates though, as Mr. Urban asked?
Because the county manager, the language in the charter protects the county manager's right to ask for reconsideration. And there are times, given that there may be time-sensitive issues, that the county manager can waive that right. And in that case, the, the time for the effectiveness of the resolution is, uh, as it is revealed in, in the resolutions that were proposed today.
Is it in the charter?
Okay, Mr. Vog?
If it said something else, that language would be meaningless. That's the only interpretation.
How's it going? So first, I just want to thank the papers for the articles they wrote on my next journey. Uh, I had over 100 people reach out to me, a lot of agencies, a lot of different centers. I have two tours next week, New Roots in Huntington Creek, meeting with the Drug and Alcohol Team on Thursday. But one of the first people to reach out with me was, uh, someone who was in front of my father, actually. And now she's recovering, and she's doing really well. So I'm going to allude some of my time to her, to tell her story really quickly.
Thank you.
Do we have your name and where you reside?
My name is Ashlyn Heller, and right now I live in Ashley.
Okay.
Um, I was born January 14th, 1996, so I'm 23 years old. I went to Hanover area all the way to graduation. Drugs got introduced to me when I was 17 years old and still in high school. I got hooked pretty quickly, and my life began to spiral out of control from then on. Summer of 2015 was the first time I was arrested, and they sent me on secured bail. I was sent to jail, I was then sent to jail two days before Thanksgiving in 2015 because I violated my bail. But then also, I was granted bail three days before Christmas by Judge Vog of that same year. I went back to court in front of my sentencing judge, which is Judge Vog, beginning of October 2016, and was then released on bail again and sent to the Daily Reporting Center of Luzerne County. Um, Judge Vog had said to me, "This was my last chance that I had." I then got sentenced December 22nd of 2016, and to this day, I remember what he said to me. In court that day, I had a drastic change in myself and my appearance. He didn't even notice I was in the courtroom. He didn't remember the girl I used to be. Judge Vog then gave me time served with two years probation and to finish DRC, which I did in about 2017. DRC put the dr, the structure I needed back in my life, and Judge Vog kept putting me away, and that's what I needed. I have relapsed one time since, since 2018, because that monster of the disease always comes forward and tells me that one time I'll be fine, and that one time always takes me back out. I may always have a relapse in me, but I don't, I'll never know if I'll have one last recovery. It was the summer of 2018 where I saw in the newspaper that LCC was coming out with an addiction diploma to become a CRS, and that's a certified recovery specialist. I enrolled at LCC in the winter of 2018 for Human Services and Social Work Program, where I will get my addiction diploma this May, and I will sit in front of the PCB boards for my CRS credential. So now I'm a full-time student, and I work full-time at Pyramid Dallas as a behavioral technician.[1728.68]